Okay.
All right, good evening. Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, August 31st. Oh, hold on. Let me record this. All of those. Councilor McKenna, slow. He didn't tell me.
This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you. All right, good evening. Welcome to Southbridge Town Council meeting of Monday, August 31st, 2020 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is via remote participation. All this meeting to order pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 38, Section 18, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the town council is being conducted via remote participation only. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. A reminder that persons who would like to view this meeting while progress may do so by watching Southbridge Cable Access Channel 192 or by the remote information noted below. We will post a record of this meeting on the town's website at www.cai.southbridge.us as soon as we are able to. Roll call vote is required for all votes taken under this order at this time. Do your rights and Councilor Adams, who should lead us in the closure allegiance, please.
So I can stand up if I can stand up.
Special allegiance to the flag of the United States. We're just saying it's one nation. We got the name of this bill. The name is just frauds. Thank you, Councilor Adams. Three meetings in a row. I had to pass it on to somebody else. Okay. Uh, roll call, Madam Secretary.
Councilor Adams.
Present.
Councilor Katrona.
Present.
Councilor Daniel.
Present.
Councilor Dow.
Present.
Councilor Jovan.
Present.
Councilor Lazo.
Excused.
Councilor Marquetti.
Present.
Councilor Ryan.
Present.
And Councilor Steves.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quarant. Minutes A, considering accept the council the whole meeting minutes of Thursday, July 23rd, 2020, 6:30 PM meeting. Is there a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
You're second. Motion by Councilor Ryan, second by Councilor Steves. Any errors, corrections, or admissions on those set of minutes? I'll go first. Councilor Steves, do you have anything?
I do have a couple. Um, under item number four, the second paragraph where it talks about where I was speaking about the council, the member of Springfield, I think it'd be clearer if it says Health Department there, Springfield Health Department. Um, under the same item, paragraph one, two, three, four, paragraph four, on the second page there, the one that starts Human Resources Specialist Kim Ferrin, um, the second to last line, I think it'd be clear if it said many people experience symptoms that go beyond the major ones. And to par- uh, the paragraph that starts Counselor Ryan stated, I think the last line there should say move this, move forward this policy that uses medically backed data is probably clearer than proposes. And, um, under, let's see, uh, the set, the next page over, B, the paragraph that leads the following amendment was made by Counselor Steves, and then the second line, the third line down, I think it says this ordinance, it should read this policy will be monitored. And, uh, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions on those proposed amendments? Councilor Ryan, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. And any other counselors? Let's see. No. Okay. Roll call to accept those minutes as amended.
Councilor Katrona.
Yes.
Councilor Daniel.
Yes.
Councilor Dow.
Yes.
Councilor Jovan.
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti.
Yes.
Councilor Ryan.
Yeah.
Councilor Steves.
Yes.
And Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries eight to zero. Item B, considering accept the town council meeting minute, meeting minutes of Monday, August 10th, 2020 at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
You're second.
I am.
Okay. Any errors, corrections, or admissions? Councilor Steves?
Um, yeah, I've got a couple. Uh, let's see. Item number, agenda item number nine on page four, um, the first full paragraph, it should say, uh, Mr. Lazo said that many other towns have purchased the metal from the tower, not Mr. Coughlin. Um, and item number 11, um, the vote count is correct. I think, I think it was you, me, and Counselor Adams that voted against that. But you've got Adams and Jovan both as voting favor of it, so, and against it, so.
Which item was that, Councilor? I'm sorry.
Item number 11. The roll call vote has Adams, Katrona, Daniel, Dow, Jovan, Marquetti, and Ryan in favor, and Adams, Jovan, and Da- and Steves against it.
Correct, yes.
I know it was you, me, you mean Dave.
Yep. Okay. Anything further, Councilor Steves?
And, uh, what was that again?
Anything else?
And item number four, yeah, item number 14 at the very end. I just wanted to add in since MasRex grants are developed to help economic development and somebody, I don't think it was Ron, but somebody else also mentioned that they generally have job creation requirements. I, I don't remember if Karen might have said that, or, uh, it might have been Karen or Rosemary, but I don't remember who said that. I don't think it was Ron.
Uh, which item was that?
Oh, it was item number 14, the very end. Just add a reference to economic development and job creation or retention goals.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. I, I mean, I guess we could pull the record and take a look at that.
Fine, I can watch the video.
Yep. All right.
Not a big deal.
Anything further? All right.
That's it.
All right, Councilor Ryan, do you have anything?
Not at the time.
Okay, anybody else? Councilor Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair through you. On, uh, page nine, the council's forum, agenda item 29. Under, uh, my section at the very bottom, the, uh, third line from the bottom, it says he thinks they need to be concerned. Um, I'd like to, uh, delete the word he and insert the words Counselor Daniel, just to, uh, clarify that it was not the town, you were saying that.
Right, good point.
Councilor Daniel, yep. I would also, maybe on the last line too, where it says he also do the same thing, Counselor Daniel. So they need to make sure they know the difference. Just to be consistent on that.
That's right.
If that's okay. Okay.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, that's all.
That way, that way, many years from now, when people look at those minutes and you can say, see, I did say I wanted to be frugal, and it was a difference. Okay. Anybody else? Councilor Marquetti, you have anything? Councilor Adams?
No, thank you.
And Councilor Katrona?
Just said.
Okay, thank you. Uh, roll call to accept those as amended.
Councilor Daniel.
Yes.
Councilor Dow.
Yes.
Councilor Jovan.
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti.
Yes.
Councilor Ryan.
Yeah.
Councilor Steves.
Yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
And Councilor Katrona.
Yes.
Motion carries as amended. Item C, considering accept the amended town council minutes of Monday, March 9th, 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, uh, Councilor Adams, do you want to state why we had to make this or Karen? Of why this was coming up so late? I think it's highlighted the reason why, but just for those new councils that aren't, uh, weren't part of that meeting?
So I'll, I'll take a shot at Mr. Chair real quick. Uh, obviously, this is back from, uh, March, when we made this motion, there was a little bit of confusion on, uh, the amendment and a few other things. And we finally got it right, but one thing we, uh, once I made that amendment to the motion, that was not carried on to these minutes. We ultimately, the following town council meeting, I believe, approved these minutes, but come to find out, this was not the exact motion that I had made.
Okay. Yeah, and it was, um, we have to make the amendment, uh, because of the funding mechanism to make sure that we get reimb- uh, able to put the funding in correctly. Is that correct, Karen?
That's correct, yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
There any questions on that? Councilor Marquetti?
Don't have any questions on it, but I do want to point out that the date at the top of this page is wrong. Says March 19th. I believe it's March 9th.
Mr. Chair.
The agenda is correct, I think.
Just, uh, maybe, I may be wrong on this one. This is the day we approved it. These weren't the dates that we made the motion. This wasn't the meeting. It could be wrong, but.
Okay.
But we are amended the minutes of that meeting of May 9th, by March 9th, so. All right, any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilor Dow.
Man.
Councilor Jovan.
Yes.
Councilor Marquetti.
Yes.
Councilor Ryan.
Abstained.
Councilor Steves.
Uh, yes.
Councilor Adams.
Yes.
Councilor Katrona.
Yes.
And Councilor Daniel.
Yes.
Motion carries six in favor, no, uh, opposed, two abstained, which would meaning reflect Councilor Dow and Councilor Ryan, because they were not part of the council at that.
Correct, that's why I abstained.
Yep, thank you. Subcommittee reports. General Government Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we haven't met recently, although several of the items on this agenda are, are, were recently dealt with on GenGov, specifically numbers nine and 12 through 17. I do not have, uh, minutes with me, and I do not have one scheduled.
Thank you. Republican Works, Councilor Mark Hiddle.
Uh, thank you. We had a DPW Subcommittee and Town Council meeting on Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, 6:00 PM, remote participation. I will try to keep this very brief. Um, we called the meeting to order at 6:01. In attendance were Subcommittee Chairman Michael Marquetti, Counselor Gustav Steves, Counselor Joseph Dow, others in attend- attendance were Acting Town Manager Karen Harnoys, Counselor Chair Jack Jovan, Counselor Vice Chair John Daniel, DPW Director Heather Blakely, DPW Deputy Director of Town Engineer Matthew Discharden. Uh, we accepted the DPW Committee, Subcommittee Minutes of July 30th, with one correction by Counselor Steves, and it was approved. We consider the application, Agenda Item Number Four, we consider the application of Sherri Bemis as citizen member on DPW, and that was unanimous to go to the council, and that's on tonight's Agenda Number Eleven. Agenda Five, we discuss the transfer of 61,300 from the Water Stabilization Fund to a new project account for WFP loading dock alterations. That was also unanimous, and it's on tonight's Agenda Number Twenty-Two. Uh, we, Number Six, we discuss the Leeds Group Incorporated contract for the FY 2021 purchase of treated salt for the winter operations. Again, it was unanimous, and it's on tonight's Agenda Number Twenty-Three. We just, Number Seven, we discuss the amendment Number One to the DHP contract for professional service for Mill Street Bridge over the Quinnabog River, also in unanimous for tonight's discussion, and it's on tonight's Agenda Number Twenty-Five. We discuss, Number Eight, discuss Amendment Number Two to Stan Tech for professional service agreement for the Bio Tower Upgrade Construction Administration Services Contract. That was unanimous for tonight's meeting, and it'll be on tonight's Agenda Number Twenty-Four. And we discuss the WFP loading dock alteration project and the bid results in the amount of 61,300 unanimous for tonight's meeting, and, uh, tonight's Agenda Number Twenty-One. We also had Agenda Number Ten, I placed an agenda item for discussion only, uh, idea of installing parking meters downtown as a source of revenue for maintenance and safety in the downtown area. This was a discussion only, and no votes were taken, and I won't speak for the counselors. They can, if they want to pine in, that's fine. Um, and then on our new business, Number Eleven, Counselor Vice Chair Daniel asked the DPW Director, Matthew Discharden, if there was a status update on the freshwater treatment plan for the reas- for the scent and discoloration from water, temperature changes. Mr. Discharden said he would get back to Counselor Daniel on the study. The meeting was adjourned at 7:12 PM and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Education Human Services, Councilor Katrona.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, no meetings have been held, no meetings are scheduled. Uh, point of reference, I did request, um, to be on the agenda this evening, two citizen members, um, I have not yet received the full explanation as to why they didn't make the agenda this evening, but I just wanted to make sure that they were aware that, uh, the request was made. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I did, uh, I know we had that conversation about putting them on. I do request that you schedule a meeting because the message that was supposed to go back to you was that in addition to those two members, there were requests from the school department, so the agenda was moved up to five, uh, agenda items, and given the fact that we're having, uh, additional items that, and Subcommittee means by remote, that you schedule a meeting. So I recommend that you schedule a meeting, or request that you schedule a meeting from the week of September 8th. I do know that Counselor Lazo is not here for protection of persons and property, but he, I know the Fire Chief, uh, and the Police Chief have, uh, some potential issues that need to be scheduled as well. So, given the fact that our next meeting will be on September 14th, that perhaps we can schedule a joint meeting, uh, to coincide on the same evening to make sure that all those requests go on, because there's, uh, surplus of equipment requests from the school district as well. So, um, that's why those members, uh, didn't get on for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the update. Um, I wish that conversation would be very much appreciated in the future going forward. Thank you.
Plan Development, Councilor Adams?
Name is Chair through you. We had a meeting on the 24th of August, uh, Agenda Items Number Ten, Eighteen, Nineteen, and Twenty on there. We'll discuss that when we get that. And then next meeting, since today, I might have scheduled another meeting, on the 9th of September, uh, very short, uh, agenda, just minutes approval and a Subcommittee Member who, uh, are attempted Subcommittee Member who, who applied the other day. So, that's all I have for you right now. Thank you.
Okay. So perhaps we can schedule all those to coordinate together to make sure, quickly get those all accomplished in one evening for the different Subcommunities. Again, protection of persons and property, he has had no meeting, but one is included. Special Committee reports, curbside Advisory Committee, Councilor Adams.
Adam, you. Never mind, I thought I hit the button, apology. Um, no new updates at this point, but I do want to set up a, I know, uh, the Town Manager will be coming in after the 8th of September. Uh, I'll sit down with him, probably maybe the following week when he has a little bit of time, to discuss a few items on the curbside, and then like, oh, care, as well, to, uh, discuss a date for the presentation as well. That's all I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. COVID-19 Public Health and Safety Briefing, um, again, the Emergency Operations Center has been, uh, temporarily closed down with the numbers, but I think Mr. Pelletier is here. I know the counselors had asked for, uh, updates on the number of, uh, cases that the town has, and I'd like to thank Andy for making sure that all that information goes out, and I know he sent an email today that some have been closed. So Andy, if you could just give a brief update as to how you're doing on your end with the cases, and I know that, I guess one question I have is the, uh, state shows us as a green community, but based on the numbers that I see, no new cases over a period of time, will that be changing? So, Mr. Pelletier?
Uh, good morning. Um, we have a total of 198 cases that have, uh, come into Southbridge. As of this afternoon, I, uh, I just emailed all of the counselors, probably about 5:30, I emailed that I had just closed three cases. As of right now, we have one active case out of the, uh, 198. Um, that case is scheduled to come off quarantine, uh, 10 days after the 25th, so right around the second or third. Um, so we're looking in really good shape in the town right now. We have had multiple days of zero cases. Um, provided we keep that trend, we should be seeing a gray community instead of a green community as of next week. Um, there is, I'm going to call it a complicated math problem, but it isn't. It's, it's really just multiple steps of simple math that keeps us in the green right now, but it's based on the fact that we only have 16,000 people in the town. So, every single case we average per day, we have to multiply by six point five, I believe, because it's supposed to be based on 100,000. So 100,000 divided by 16, one case per day for us, ends up being like 6.5 cases a day for 100,000 people. It's a series of three math problems that merge into one at the bottom. Um, so, based on the recent trends, I think we may end up in the gray because we've had multiple days, I don't think we have more than five over the last 14 days, and the first indicator or the first, um, category setter is less than five total cases in a two-week period. Um, if we do not see a spike in the next day or two, we should see it in next week's report. So, I will keep the council up to date on that. You may or may not be aware, um, I tried to get the information out, but I want to make it available to the people, that there are four additional states that were added to the low-risk states. So Massachusetts will not require a quarantine in Colorado, although how you get there without crossing others, I don't know, but Colorado, Delaware, Pennsylvania, and West Virginia have been added to the low-risk states as of yesterday. Um, any other questions that the council may have for me, or anybody attending?
Any questions? Councilor Marquetti?
I just have a couple of questions. First of all, I just want to be clear, what, we're in phase three right now, step one, is that correct?
We are, and we are in phase three, step one. According to the Governor, indefinitely, he hasn't given any indication that we're pulling out of that yet.
Uh, is there any, is there any plans for the library to open for browsing?
Um, I know the library has talked to Karen, they haven't talked to me yet, um, so she might be better to answer this, but I believe they want to open in some capacity in the near future. You might want to defer to Karen for that.
Mr. Chair. Yes, if I could actually, and, and, I was mentioning it during, um, Town Managers' announcements, that the, um, library is going to be opening on Tuesday, September 8th. I'll give you a few more details at that time.
Great. Um, the other thing is, um, I'm, when I go to shopping, or I go to the Y, or even tonight, when the Bay Pass Superintendent was talking, a lot of the, uh, buildings, municipal buildings, and all businesses, all have certain protocol for coming in, for walking down the hallways, for leaving. The Town Hall has eliminated all that, and I was wondering, I wonder, I'm just wondering if it might be wise to go back to having one way in and one way out, and, you're the expert, but I just, I just noticed that when you go to the Town Hall, you can walk in anywhere, and you can walk out anywhere, so. Just wondered if you had thought about any of that?
At the Town Hall, we still have, um, social distance markings on the, on the carpet where we expect people will be waiting in line. Um, the problem with one way in and one way out at the Town Hall is that we as employees have to move back and forth throughout the building. So if we mandate that the customers go one way, in the side door, out the front door, then every time we want to maneuver within the building, we also would have to go out the front door and come back in, and that would be a serious burden on the resources of the town, I would think. Um, we've got to keep in mind that the definition of a close contact, obviously, we want to minimize all close contact, but the definition of a close contact with the state remains within six feet for an extended period of time. So passing each other in the hall, though there is minimal impact, it is minimal compared to what a true close contact would be. So I'm, I'm not, I'm weighing the value of the resources of the town against that brief passing in the hall, and I, I don't think it's worth the town being, being inconvenienced, and basically a five-minute, I mean, a, a 45-second walk for me down to see Ms. Harnoy would end up tripling my time because I'd have to go out the front door and back in the side door.
Okay. And finally, do we still have a nurse in the Health Department?
We have a public health nurse. She is not part of the COVID reviews. I have taken over all of the COVID reviews since Ms. Alicia left. We were paying Ms. Alicia a stipend, if you remember voting on that, to, um, to be the point person for COVID. Ms. Alicia has left the department, um, unfortunately, at a very untimely time, but a good time for her. So, um, I've taken over all of the, all of the COVID stuff. Ms. Cheryl Rowinsky is still the public health nurse for the town. She does standard cases. Um, we have cases such as tuberculosis, right now, we have a tuberculosis case, a babesiosis case, a salmonella case, and one other case. I'd have to get on Maven to find out what it is. But we have four active communicable disease other than COVID right now, and she handles those.
Very good. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Saying none, thank you. Chairman's announcements. After, uh, many months of asking people to step up for the charter review, uh, we had a very limited response to that. Um, so at this point, I will, uh, announce the parties that had communicated to join the charter review committee and look forward to their work over the next year. Those individuals that have reached out to me that I am appointed to the charter review commission, uh, not commissioned, charter review, review, is just a review, are David Smick, Denise Clements, Richard Nash, Minique Manor, and Andrew March. And we'll get a letter to them. Um, tonight, we filled two openings for the School Committee, Bay Pass School Committee, and Southridge School Committee. We still have an opening on the Southridge Housing Redevelopment Authority that nobody has applied for. If there's anybody out there wishing to be part of that, please reach out to Town Manager's Office, as well as other committees that have openings. Uh, so it's our opportunity, we saw a couple residents step up tonight. Uh, if you're interested in getting involved in the town, uh, town needs you. 17,000 people in this town. Um, there's a lot of talent out there, and we look forward to somebody putting their name in. I know we have a couple appointments tonight, that individuals that, uh, put their names forward to other committees. Just to announce, the new Town Manager, Michael McCall, will be starting on September 8th, 2020. We look forward to, uh, him joining the town. Uh, I thank Karen for the work over the last couple of weeks and throughout the last year, and helping the Town Council throughout all this COVID and other issues. To my, uh, fellow counselors, uh, we will need to schedule a special Town Council meeting on September 14th, 2020, for an executive session only. We will have our regular meeting that night, which will be a remote meeting, but I'm looking to schedule that meeting, uh, executive session prior to the regular council meeting. So I'll be asking to, uh, set that meeting for 5:30, and I'll be working with the Airport Commission, the airport to see if they can use their conference room for this meeting. It is a legal issue that we have to undertake. Um, and as such, uh, it's my preference to hold an executive session, uh, where we can have, uh, the parties, uh, present and, uh, make sure that the integrity of executive session is maintained, uh, but also practice social distancing. Uh, as you're aware, we would, uh, just open in, in open session, go immediately to executive session, and then adjourn from executive session with no votes or any other public input allowed at a executive session. So that is my, uh, take on having that. Like to do that meeting beforehand. Originally, it was requested that we do this tonight, but given the fact that we had 27 items plus two other meetings, I asked the attorney if we could postpone it, and he was able to. So, uh, plus, I would like Mr. McCall to be part of those discussions as well. Uh, so just no, uh, fellow counselors that I'd like to have a meeting at 5:30 PM on September 14th at the airport. If any of counselors have any issues with that, please let me know. That's all I have for this evening. And I'll turn it over to- And I'll turn it over to our uh actual town manager, Karen Harnoy. Ms. Harnoy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as I, as we mentioned earlier, we had a meeting with the library director today. They were anxious to um get open to the public, so it was decided that the library will open to the public starting on Tuesday, September eighth at nine A M. The hours will be Monday through Friday, nine A M. to five P M. Um, patrons can spend up to thirty minutes in the library, and they can browse through the new books area, but that's the only area they'll be available for browsing. There'll be access to three computers, a copier, scanner, and printer. One family is allowed at a time in the children's room. The curbside service will continue. All patrons will be required to wear masks, and the cleaning will be done by the custodian throughout the day. In the evening, the um company that quoted the job, M and I, will go through the building and do the cleaning at the library. Um, one other announcement, I just wanna, we just want to put a reminder out there because we've been getting some feedback, there has been some meetings and small gatherings at the town common, that any use of the town common requires a permit. And the permits can be obtained from the town manager's office, as it is a simple process. And the application is available either on the website or in person at the town manager's office. The application should be returned to the town manager's office. Um, there is a minimum of thirty-day notice for events, although we do try to accommodate everyone. And self-reverent residents are given preference. There is no fee associated with it unless you need electricity. And there's a fifty-dollar security deposit for the key, which is refunded once the key is returned. And that is all I have for this evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, and town manager. Um, citizens forum. No, there's no presentation this evening or swearing in. Citizens forum.
I believe Councilor Adams has something.
Oh, I jumped on.
Counselor Marketti, I'll just wait until council's forum.
Sorry, I didn't see that.
That's okay. I'll wait till the council's forum, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
There any citizens that wish to address the town council on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Given the fact that Mr. Bishop, who just contacted me, had a problem with uh not being able to speak, I'm gonna unmute the callers because he called in. So let me see if I can unmute him. If it allows me to. Is there anybody who wishes to address the town council on anything not on the agenda this evening? Seeing none? We'll move on to item nine. Vote to confirm the appointment of Denise Clements as a citizen member to the general government subcommittee for one-year term through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or until a new member is appointed and pending completion of state ethics. Is there a motion?
Remove. Second.
They're second. Motion by Counselor Ryan, second by Counselor uh Steve's. Uh, any counselor, uh, Steve, this is your subcommittee?
Yes, it was, and we we obviously talked to Denise about it. She was there at the time. Um, she's been a member of our committee for several years running. Obviously, as you guys know, she's on the council for many years before then. So uh she's always been a very good participant, and she brings a lot to the table, so I definitely would support having her back on the committee. And the committee vote, I think it was unanimously, except for her, of course, to to recommend her.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Ryan, do you have anything?
No, I do not.
Any other counselors that I can see online here? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
No.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Motion carries seven-one. Counselor Adams, opposed. Item ten, vote to confirm the appointment of Dolores LaRochelle as a citizen member to the planning development subcommittee effective immediately through July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, or until a new member is appointed and her state ethics is in good standing at this time. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Remove. Okay.
A motion by Counselor Adams, second by Counselor Steve's. Counselor Adams, this is your subcommittee?
Yes, it was, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Um, voted two-zero-one uh in favor of. Highly recommend her for this position. She has not only sat on this subcommittee last year, she obviously is a volunteer this year as well. She did a great job last year, uh, voiced her opinion quite frequently, uh, had great ideas. And before that, she was also uh part of the redevelopment authority for the town, and there she participated as well with great ideas and hard questions and uh uh, again, I highly recommend her for this position.
Thank you. Anything for, Counselor Steve's, anything?
No, thanks. I agree with her.
Counselor Ryan?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Thank uh Mrs. LaRochelle for stepping back up. Roll call.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
In here, so all present. Thank you, Mrs. LaRochelle. Item eleven, vote to confirm the appointment of Sherri Bemis as a citizen member to the Department of Public Works for a one-year term through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or until a new member is appointed, impending completion of state ethics training. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Adams, second by Counselor Marketti. Counselor Marketti?
Yeah, this was the uh, we voted unanimous to support Sherri Bemis. Uh, she has a very impressive resume. Highly recommended. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Steve's, anything?
Nothing. I agree.
Ryan?
Nothing at this time.
Any other counselors? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Okay, in here, so all present. Item twelve, vote to confirm the appointment of Emily Courtney as an alternate member to the Zona Board of Appeals for a two-year term through June third, two thousand and twenty-two to fill the vacancy of an unexpired term, impending completion of state ethics training. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second.
Second.
Motion, motion is second. A motion by Counselor Ryan, second by Counselor Daniel. Uh, Ms. Harnoy, do you have anything on this one?
Yes, I do. Um, I reached out to uh Ms. Courtney today. We had a short, pleasant conversation at the end of the day, and actually, she's she's present. And um I'll let her answer any questions, but I just wanted to say that she was very happy to give back and to serve her community. She also owns her own business. Um, and she's she's eager to um to be an alternate on the on the Z B A. And I'll turn it over to her if she has anything else to say.
Let me see if I can unmute you there, Emma. Oh, not mute, huh?
Sometimes if they blow out, they come back in.
Let me just see, no, hold on. Let me see if I can. I can't unmute her for some reason. Go ahead, Emily.
Go on.
Sorry, it was just a technical glitch. Um, I'm very excited and passionate about trying to work in my town, and I'm just looking to give back. And I have my own business, and I get that it's gonna take some commitment.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Chair. Can I uh ask you what kind of business you're in?
I own a bar, mister. Have you heard of Lietrim's Pub? It's near W P I.
Thank you. I would, I would, I would have thought like.
It's a lot of fun.
Okay. Counselor Steve's, any questions?
Um, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this this would have gone through Gen Gov, and uh it would have been, I I wish you had been there so we could have asked you a few questions. I was hoping if you could give, you mentioned a little bit about your business background. Was there any particular reason why you chose to do zoning board? And I noticed on your application, you were also interested in agricultural commission. So I was hoping you could talk a little bit about both of those.
I picked zoning board because I feel like um it's just the most interesting, to be honest. And I'm interested in real estate, and I just think it's gonna be interesting, and I want to meet new people in a business-business setting that's not in a bar setting.
Okay, that makes sense. How long have you been in town, and what's what kind of a, what's your perspective on, for example, I don't, let me backtrack, backtrack. Have you had a chance to take a look at our zoning rules, and what's your perspective on them? They're pretty lengthy.
I haven't had a chance to go over all of the zoning rules, but I grew up in Stirbridge for most of my life, and then I moved to Southbridge last year from Auburn. We bought a duplex in the area.
Hey, welcome to town. I'm glad you, I'm glad you put your name in. It's always nice to see new people getting involved, so thank you for doing that. Um, that's all I have as far as, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Counselor Ryan?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Well, Emily, thank you for uh putting your name forward and uh stepping up, and uh look forward to uh you getting your feet wet here in the town politics and uh uh town government. We certainly appreciate it, especially being a business owner uh perspective that you bring, and especially, uh, you know, it looks like you have a marketing degree from uh UMass Amherst.
Yep.
Great school. So we welcome your expertise as a business owner, um, and a new resident to uh to that board. So thank you for putting your name forward.
Appreciate that.
Um, I just have a question uh for Counselor Steve. Counselor Steve, did this not go to your subcommittee? Because I have a note here saying to General Gov, okay, from Ron Sanangelo. So.
Yeah, we did, we talked about it, but unfortunately, Emily, Emily didn't make it that meeting, and Ron wasn't there either, so we honestly had nothing to work with. We did end up, we did end up wanting to recommend, but it was kind of vague because we really didn't know much. We learned more about it in just the last two years of talking to her than we knew then, so thank you for coming, Emily.
All right, thank you. I just want to make sure that it did go because I saw the note, so. All right, thank you. Little procedural errors, uh. If there's no further discussion, roll call.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
And Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Welcome aboard, Emily. Look forward to uh seeing you at meetings. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a great night.
Yeah. Item thirteen, vote to confirm the appointment of James Colerus to the Agricultural Commission effective immediately through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Colerus will be moving from his alternate member position to a regular member. His state ethics is in good standard. Is there a motion?
Remove, remove.
I have a motion by Counselor Steve, second by Counselor Ryan. Uh, did this go to General Gov or?
Yes, it did, Mr. Chairman, and we unanimously recommended the change. Uh, Mr. Colerus, as he noted, is currently an alternate member. He's been there for a couple of years. He's been very involved. Um, as much as he can be, given his weird scheduling sometimes. Um, and he's very knowledgeable. He's runs a small farm uh and has for several years. He actually is my neighbor. He's like literally right behind me. Um, and he's got a small farm with all kinds of stuff going on, so he's a wealth of knowledge on the issue.
Thank you. And I understand, Mr. Colerus, you're here online this evening? Do you have anything you want to say?
Yeah, I'm here. Uh, I mean, I've worked, trying, we're, you know, we've been working to try to get the uh right-to-farm bill through, and we're working to modify the poultry bylaws. So, you know, we're trying to effect some change and working with the town on those. Uh, bring more possibilities for people to generate their own food and try to educate as many people as want to listen.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Hey, counselors, all right, let's see. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
And Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Colerus. Looking forward and uh for your continued work with the uh Agricultural Commission.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, vote to confirm the appointment of Dr. Ciro DiMeglio as an alternate member of the Agricultural Commission through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, to fill the unexpired term, impending completion of state ethics training. Is there a motion?
Don't move, don't move.
There's a motion is second. Okay. Uh, Counselor Steve's?
Yes, this went to our committee as well, and uh we unanimously recommended him. He's at the back, he's the one that's doing the the agricultural project down over on Henry Street and and Worcester Street there. And I think as a person, I think it's a great idea to have that kind of a a use and use some sort of creative i- ideas that are to add to the the ideas that Jim just mentioned about what the commission's already doing, so I'm in favor of that one.
Thank you.
We recommend it.
Any other questions?
What was that?
Okay. Now, I was asking if anybody else had any questions. Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marketti?
Yes.
Counselor Ron?
Yeah.
And Counselor Steve's?
Yes.
In here, so all present. Item fifteen, vote to ratify the master service agreement form and task order form to be used to maintain StanTech consultant services at the Southbridge Municipal Airport for a term of five years per the recent request for qualifications awarded on June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion?
Remove, remove.
Okay, motion by Counselor Daniel, second by Counselor Steve's. Uh, I guess, Karen, do you have anything you want to say on this first, or?
Um, we discussed this at the general government meeting. Um, unfortunately, Mr. Clements wasn't available at the time. But um I believe my understanding of it is is that um the state also requires us to go out and we're required to go out for the request for proposal. Um, maybe Mr. Clements, because I'm not sure if there was another vendor other than StanTech that responded to it. But we're going to do this this um contract for a five-year term. I believe it's the five-year term. And um we use StanTech for the projects related to the airport, and I'll ask Mr. Clements if he'd like to make any other comments on it.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, uh, thank you, Chairman. Uh, we're we're reaching out. This is the master service agreement. We, last one we signed was in two thousand and fourteen. Uh, today, the state requires us to do two two master service agreements. One is for engineering and one is for planning. So we submitted, both of those went out to the public for a request for qualifications. Back in uh, I think in the May, we we at in June, we we had the people come in and and StanTech, we chose StanTech for both of those, those uh those are our queues that went out. Uh, basically, what this is, is they become our our master planners or our master uh service agreement for engineering. What happens every time a project comes before the airport commission, becomes before the council, a task order is put in front of us. So this does not just give a green light for them to do, you know, to do anything for us. Basically, we we get some, we get submission from them on all the costs that go with the project, and we review and we review the S D and F A, and uh before it's signed off by the airport commission, before it goes to the town council for approval. So basically, this master service agreement is the uh StanTech, our chosen uh party, uh, they're the ones that the next five years would take us forward. Uh, they basically will start with the, you know, in the past is the uh the the master plan for the airport, and then all the parts that go through the airport would go through their business, through StanTech. So like the uh fuel farm we just, we're just completing, that was done by StanTech. Uh, some of the uh apron work that was done, the the uh the building that was done, and three years ago, that was all, you know, done through StanTech through our master service agreement. So the master service agreement means we pick one party to to uh work for us and our and our behalf, but we do get to review all, every contract that comes before us. We can look at it for cost and and make sure it's what the time. and make sure it's what the town wants.
Okay, questions? Counsel Steve, I'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, thank you very much for the to Rick Clements for for attending this because you just explained in a few minutes a lot of, a lot of the confusion that we could have, we had at the GenGov meeting when um we had to, the way it works is that we ended up having, we talked about it for a little while at GenGov and we was, we're pretty confused about it because of the fact that um Rick and um John Henry weren't there and John Henry eventually called in, so he clarified some of the issues. Um, so thank you for being here, Rick. Um, I don't know if John Henry is one of the callers, but I don't know if it's necessary to be either. Um, but so we ended up, we ended up recommending it a three to one, as I recall, uh Counsel Marketti was the one opposing vote. Um, and there were some certainly some concerns about it, and I know Mike raised it and Joe Katrona raised some about these, about some of the issues that they had. Uh, one of the questions I was concerned through you to Rick is um you you mentioned that you did RFQs for both planning and engineering. And but was StanTech the only one to respond to both of them? And is that what and and are you, did you kind of incorporate them both into this master services agreement? Or would there be legally a requirement to have two separate agreements for them?
Well, first, uh, yeah, we did. We did have some other parties that that uh also submitted some bids to the RFQs that came in. I believe uh on the engineering, there's two, and on the planning, there was three. Uh, but we would have to have a signature for both, one for engineering and one for planning. In the past, in going back five years, there was one agreement for both. But Mass DOT felt that uh they that we, if we're going forward, we should uh have one for engineering, one for planning, should in the future we decide, you know, again, to have two different entities uh work for the town. That's what we go, we would do. So at this, and at this point, we'd have to have two master service agreements signed, one for the engineering and one for planning. You know, again, the planning would be for for future plans. We have, we just capital improvement projects that we we we, when we meet with the FAA that in the DOT and and the master plan would be part of the planning process. And then the engineering would be when when we actually have a task. They do, they've uh put forward the the task order for engineering such as, you know, we have coming up in another year is redoing the the runway surface. They go out and do all the topos and all the engineering for the runway and they put it together, all the uh the proposal, all the the paperwork to go out to bid for that for that project.
Okay, so then clarify then for everybody who's watching that this particular master services agreement is for engineering only. It's not for planning.
Uh, like I said, we we put both out to bid. I think uh I'd like to see if we can make a change to this to this item fifteen because it should be a approval to sign a master service agreement, one for planning and one for engineering. Uh, StanTech was was awarded both of those, so we need to have one for each.
Because we only, we are, when we discussed it at GenGov, it was, as I said, it was rather confusing. It was all, we were all under the impression that we were talking about one master services agreement. And it wasn't entirely clear what it covered because of than what the text was saying, so I didn't even realize that there was two. I didn't even realize there were two separate processes on here at the time. Uh, so, so, so this one, so I just clarified, so this one is covering the engineering. And I think I figure if we we vote this now, um, and then I I don't, maybe if it, I mean, if the council wants to do a second item today, I would think it would make more sense to clarify it by sending it, sending the second one back to GenGov and I realize that it might be a little redundant for for the sake of clarity, so we know what we're all doing and voting on. That's my thought on the question.
If we do, if we, yeah, if we can sign the engineer, the engineer one today, that would be, I think that would be the way to go. And I think looking at this, you know, I can see where everybody's confused and I think if we sign the engineering master ser- service agreement today, let's go back and and put the planning master service agreement back in front of uh general, you know, your subcommittee.
Okay. That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
You're muted, Jack.
Thank you. Sorry about that. The new uh, new lingo is going to be you're muted, right? Uh, everywhere. Um, so Rick, I I'm just looking at this master service agreement. Where does it indicate that it's for engineering? It just says master service agreement, so where is it that delineates that it's an engineering versus planning?
Well, bas- um.
I I mean.
Well, basically, basically, this is not, uh, I, you know, I look at some of this. It was signed off as, you know, with the town manager and I think we we kind of got lost in between because I asked them to have it go to uh have your, a legal team or a legal person take a look at it to make sure they're properly written. So uh, there are Qs, ones for, one, one is for uh engineering and one is for planning. But the master service agreement will be actually the exact same agreement. One, it just has to have the detail put into it. One is for planning and one is for engineering. And I think, so what we have here is just a a generic master service agreement, but it doesn't specify one or the other.
Yeah, I mean, that that's where I'm confused because it's just a master service agreement. Doesn't delineate what exactly you're selling, signing that master service agreement for. So the question is, does this agreement have to be reworked as well through the town manager's office? I mean, when do you need this engineering to uh come through forward?
Well, the engineering, I think we'd like to sooner than later, but if we have to wait and properly, I'm more than willing to wait whatever it takes, you know, two weeks to the next meeting and get it done properly, if that's what it takes.
Uh, yeah, if we could, maybe have have the new town manager take a look at the contract, make sure we're all on the same page. Could we, is that fine?
Well, we've, we've already rewarded it, so it's really just a matter of of making sure the agreement looks, you know, is proper to town. That's what it, that's what it has to be. And if, you know, we can have the new town manager take a look at it, that that's fine as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr.
I have just a copy of the same paperwork you have and it's confusing. It's mixed up and I think I think we should wait. I think it should go back and make sure the town manager takes a look at it and legal team looks at it and make sure it's it's correct, one for engineering and one for planning.
Okay. Counsel Steve? Very great. Yeah, thank you. Um, I was just going to quickly ask, you said that you had asked the manager to send it to um legal. Did it actually get legally reviewed?
No.
By anybody? That doesn't surprise me.
I think it was in, it was in the past four weeks. I think it just, it just, you know, it's one of those things that fell through the cracks. It didn't get done.
Thank you. Yeah, then I would definitely rec, then I definitely move that we postpone this till the next council meeting.
Okay, so is a master postponed to uh?
Uh, until the first council meeting after the new, the new town manager comes in. So the next one's next week, so.
No, next one's September fourteenth.
It's the fourteenth, okay, okay.
Yeah, because next week is um Labor Day, so there's no meeting on the first one. So it's the fourteenth. So a motion to postpone till September fourteenth. There was a motion and a second. All right. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Katrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
And Counsel Adams?
Yes.
So we'll make sure we get with you uh next week to uh set up some kind of meeting with Karen, set it up with you and uh the town manager will call and see what we have to review and go through uh to get it back.
Oh, thank you very much. I think, I think it's the right way to go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rick.
Item sixteen, vote to ratify the contract with Cook and Company Insurance Services to provide a dedicated health plan management consultant service to the town for period July first, two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one for the contract amount of nine thousand eight hundred dollars per year. Contract is renewable for two additional years at the sole discretion of the town. Is there a motion?
No move, again.
Counsel Steve's motion, Counsel Daniel's second. Uh, Karen, do you want to take this first or Counsel Steve's?
Sure, I'll, I'll just.
I'll come in.
All right, I'll have Karen go first.
Okay.
So this did go to general government and it also ended up going um back. The uh, it was requested that we have more than, request more than one company to put in quotes. We ended up with two. This was actually, this quote was a little bit higher than the other one, but as we discussed in subcommittee, it's a more complete package um than than the other quote with four. The other concern at subcommittee, the reason why it went back too, is I believe it had a couple of automatic renewals and the um the subcommittee wasn't comfortable with that. So now the contract is renewable for two additional years at the discretion of the town. It actually has to come back every year to be renewed. And I know Melissa is also on the call for any additional questions or details because she did a lot of the research on this.
Thank you. Counsel Steve?
Um, actually, she pretty much said what I was going to say. We did end up recommending that, recommending approval.
Thank you. There any questions? Counsel Ryan, any questions?
None at this time.
Any other councilors? See none, roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Katrona?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Seven to one with Counsel Katrona opposed. Item seventeen, vote to ratify the agreement between the town of Southbridge and Valley Green Shredding LLC to provide services for the secure destruction of records on a regular basis at a cost of thirty-two dollars every four weeks or approximately four hundred and sixteen dollars annually with the option for renewal for successive one-year terms. Is there a motion?
No move, no move.
Motion by Counsel Adams, seconded by Counsel Ryan. Karen?
Okay, thank you. So this one's coming forward. We just need to, we needed to verify the cost. So it's going to be for the destruction of records. I believe that the um police department is also going to be part of this, only they're going to have a separate um a separate bin at their location and they'll pay for it out of their budget. And um it brought the the cost down. Melissa worked with the vendor on this. It'll be thirty-two dollars every four weeks for approximately four hundred and sixteen dollars annually.
Counsel Steve?
Um, yeah, this this went through GenGov and actually the way this item is phrased is not what we actually recommended. Um, what we, with the course of the discussion was that um that we were talking about this thirty-two dollars every four weeks is for one container. For each, for each container, um beyond that, it would be, as I recall correctly, and and Melissa is here so she can clar, uh, yeah, she's here so she can clarify. As I recall, it was to be, it was to be slightly lower for every subsequent container with the options for other departments to participate at the lower additional cost and an option to renew for up to two consecutive one, successive one-year terms. It wasn't, we didn't recommend during the the um, the way it's phrased, your option of renewal for successive one-year terms, just going added for an item. It was specifically for two successive one-year terms and we can revisit the program if we wish to at the end of those two-year terms, those two terms. Um, so I would recommend that we that we rephrase this agenda item to reflect, what does that? Oh, to reflect what GenGov actually voted.
So if I may.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Um, this is not, we don't get to write the contract for the vendor. There is a one-year contract and we can opt out.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I can, I can understand that part of it. Um, in that case, then I think we'll clarify then that the, what the, it says thirty-two dollars per uh, thirty-two dollars every four weeks. The way that is phrased, um, the way that the paperwork we have in front of us says sixty-four gallon security cart. What the first one is thirty-two dollars and then anything thereafter is fifteen dollars each.
Correct, because that needs per location.
Is it for this, would it be for the same location or would it be for?
For the same location, the second container is fifteen dollars.
So the way they're doing it is that if the, if we do one in town hall, it's thirty-two dollars. And then the police department is also paying thirty-two dollars. It's not the same, but even though it's the same town contract.
Correct. And then if if we were for whatever reason to need two containers um one week, then it would be an additional fifteen dollars. Like if I, if we were doing a clean out and I wanted an extra container, I could call for that and it's fifteen dollars for this contract.
Okay. But then, then if I'm understanding that, then is this current contract then only covering your odds? Because it seems like the way it's, the way it's currently phrased is only for that, for that particular uh that particular container and that the police department or any other department would have to get their own contracts with the same age, with the same entity. That's definitely not what I thought, what I was understanding during GenGov.
So I had originally brought this forward for just the town hall offices. Um, but other departments had expressed interest in it at other locations. And so this is the pup, this is a contract for the container and it is applicable to any department that wishes to add on to it and we uh as we discussed in GenGov, the police department expressed that interest and I discussed that interest with uh Valley Green Shredding, so this would apply to them should they choose to execute it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for it. Counselors?
See none, roll call.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yeah.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
And Counsel Katrona?
No, missed me.
Sorry about that. Counsel Steve? Yeah, I heard you. It was an accident.
No problem. Yes.
The motion carries. Seven to one with Counsel Katrona opposed. Item fourteen, vote to ratify the Department of Housing and Community Development DHCD agreement with the town of Southbridge as the lead town for the community development block grant. CDVG coronavirus CD grant providing two hundred and fifty thousand for regional micro enterprise assistance to eligible Southbridge, Sturbridge and Charlton businesses. Is there a motion?
No move.
Your second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Counsel Adams, seconded by Counsel Daniel. Uh, Ms. Henry?
Yes, thank you. So this item went to subcommittee and was recommended. Um, the application process had already been agreed to by the town council to send send it forward. So this is the award of the the grant itself for the um micro enterprise assistance that will be with the three towns, Southbridge, Sturbridge and Charlton, with Southbridge being the lead town community.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Adams, did you have anything else?
I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a three-zero vote, unanimous. Uh, some of the questions that popped up was um, one question I asked, is this an actual loan, kind of like what we do with the commercial PDVG funds and this is a link rate. This is up to ten thousand dollars per business, but the business must be five employees or less, but you could also include the holders into that account as well, so there could be stakes. Um, and and lastly, it was um basically general talk about how we were going to get this information out through this Southbridge business partnership. Uh, we have Counsel Dow brought it up through the town clerk's office. Uh, Counsel Marketti had brought up a couple areas, you know, social media was one, I don't know. Marketti had uh um he had recommended an area as well, but uh we just wanted to, it just went through. We wanted to make sure all these small businesses within Southbridge uh were notified along with Charlton and Sturbridge as well.
Thank you. Uh, questions? Counsel Steve, do you have anything?
No, Mr. Chairman.
And Counselor Ryan?
I have nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other counselors? Counselor Marquetti?
Um, I just wanted to say that, uh, I think it was Counselor Dow that said, uh, it might be worth our while to send out a letter to the businesses. We know who they are and send them to all. And that's what I agreed with. I thought that was a pretty good idea. If we could just get a list, we, the town clerk must know where, where all these businesses are and just send them a, a letter telling them that they qualify for this. The other thing that I had asked was, um, since the town is being a lead on this, we're the ones that put the bid out. We're the ones that did the work on all of this. Is there anything that the town gets? I don't know. I don't know what words I'm looking for. Uh, does the town get any extra? Does the town get any? Get to put a fee in for doing all the work on this? Because it does benefit three towns, but it seems like to me that the town did all the work. Thank you.
Ms. Hannah?
Mr. Chair, if I could, um, I was privy to some, the e- some emails that went back and forth between, um, PEG and Rosemary and they were discussing what we were discussing at the subcommittee there, that they do have, um, the list of the businesses, that they will make sure that they get all the information out, that everybody can be included. Now, we can't, the Town of Southbridge get an admin fee because the admin fee is going to be going to the, um, the company that's going to help to administer the grant. Um, but I believe what was said is that Southbridge is the biggest town out of the three towns that, so chances are the, um, the bigger piece of the, probably go to the Town of Southbridge.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Counselor Adams?
Just to be specific about this, that question was raised and I believe, I'm not sure who, who it was, but I said, no, we don't get a bigger portion than another area. It's not set aside that way. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seenan, roll call?
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
And Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
In every soul present. Item nineteen, vote to ratify the agreement between the Quabog Valley Community Development Corporation, QVCDC, and the Town of Southbridge to administer the community development block grant, CDVG coronavirus CD grant of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for micro enterprise assistance. Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Counsel Adams, second by Counselor Daniel, I guess. Um, any questions on this one? Counselor Adams?
Uh, well, this, this is, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is obviously to administrate, administer this, this grant for all three towns. Those Southbridge will be receiving, I believe, it's a quarterly update from this, um, maybe del- I'm sorry, uh, will be receiving that from the community development, um, company or, or, uh, grant loner. And, uh, it was a three-zero vote. One question that was raised in there was about fifteen percent that's set aside. That's fifteen percent that's actually loaned out, granted out to these small businesses and not the fifteen percent and I receiving that thirty-some odd thousand dollars straight up. Start.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Griffin's is on, uh, Rosemary, I, I, I muted one. I'm not sure if it's two or not.
Yes, hi. Um, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Um, uh, Counselor Adams had mentioned that, um, the size of the company can be a total of five employees plus the owner. Actually, it's, it's a total of five, including the owner. Um, another couple of things I want to mention. Um, uh, this has been, um, pushed out already, um, a few times to, um, the SVP, um, at two separate meetings, two separate partner meetings, uh, made announcements. Um, I've also been, um, speaking to the Economic Development Commission about it and they are going to be helping to push, um, you know, referrals to me. One of the members of the, um, EDC is Carly Wilson of Cornerstone Bank and, um, she worked, she was at the forefront and still is of the PPP loans which were under the SBA. So she's already sent me two referrals, um, of, uh, small businesses of that size that were not, either they weren't successful in getting the PPP loans or, um, if they did, it didn't cover all of their losses. So, um, I am use, um, you know, I'm using social media. I'm using the groups that exist. I have a distribution list of over two hundred or three hundred people. Um, so I, I have been pushing it out and, um, the Quabog Valley CDC, um, is, uh, just sent us a draft uh, sales flyer for this, or I should say a marketing flyer that we're going to be following up with, with, on this.
Okay, thank you, Rosemary. Any other questions?
I have a question, Mr. Chair.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. Um, to either Rosemary or Dave, maybe, um, one of you can answer, Counselor Adams, excuse me, um, can answer this. Um, so what, why was, what was the reason to going with the firm to administer this instead of handling this in-house with the town or having the town handle their own?
If I can answer that, um.
Go ahead, Rosemary.
So, okay. Um, the Quabog Valley CDC, their, this is their expertise, working with small business and, um, vetting financials, um, and that sort of thing. Um, when, uh, DHCD, the, the town has never provided, um, direct loans or grants to businesses, um, to, you know, make up for lost revenue before. Our department has never had that type of activity, uh, under our, our CDVG grant. Um, that really takes a, an agency that is specifically set up to work with small business. Um, and, uh, DHCD, the state agency where these monies were funneled through from HUD, um, strongly suggested that any community that wanted to apply for this micro enterprise fund that we, um, contract with a community development corporation or another similar type of agency that does this a hundred percent of their time. So they're just getting twenty percent of however, of the total that we spend, um, in, in total across the three communities. So the most that they would get would be fifty thousand dollars for doing this.
Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's saying fifteen percent. I'm not sure why she said.
Oh, I'm sorry, fifteen. I'm sorry. I don't have the paperwork in front of me. Right, it would be fifteen percent of, um, the total with the max being two hundred and fifty thousand.
One, one more thing, uh, please, if I can. Regarding, regarding, uh, notify the businesses, I, uh, think, you know, just my opinion, if we started doing this through the clerk, uh, and we have those businesses listed in the systems by the, uh, what she have on record, I think this is a good idea for some businesses. They're not aware, uh, the town, he get help to them and that will give them more, uh, hope for the town to stay here. We're looking for them. We worry about them. I think some businesses, they're not, uh, follow media. They don't follow certain things. By, by business certificate, when they go apply for it, we have a record of them in the town. Uh, I think we should start sending stuff, you know, when we get help from the, anyway, send them, uh, letters to keep everything to, through the system and we know how many businesses, what kind, smalls. I know they have them on papers and a file, but I'm sure they have a, like, list of them already in the system, ready to go out if we have to send them a D note or anything. So I recommend to send them to by mail. Uh, we get the information through the clerk office and thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Marquetti?
Oh, yeah, um, I think this is great. I'm glad that this is going forward. I don't have any problem with, uh, hiring this company to hand this money out. I'm just wondering if we should add that in the, in the agenda item, that they would be getting fifteen percent and no more than thirty-seven thousand five hundred. That was what I believe was in the agenda when we talked about it on general government. I think so. So, I mean, if you don't think it's necessary, that's fine, but I thought maybe we should add that in. Thank you.
It is in the, it is in the contract. It does state that in the contract.
So it's part of their contract documents, correct?
Right. It's in the contract that you're, yeah.
Yeah. And it's also in the request for proposal.
Right.
All right, thank you.
Right. Yeah. Says that, so it's, so it's right in the contract. Any other questions? Comments?
I just wanted to clear it up though. Sorry. I just wanted to, I wanted to clear it up though. It's fifteen percent, no more than thirty-seven thousand five hundred. Correct?
Yeah. Okay, correct. And that's what is in the contract. Yeah, it says in the contract. So.
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to clarify, Rosemary had brought up the, uh, the five employees and that included the owner. I'll, I'll go back and look at the notes again, but I, I thought it was five or less plus the owner and adding the owner to it could be six. Thought that was briefed us, but I could be wrong. I just want to make sure it's clarified when we get this information out. So that's all I have.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, my understanding is that it, it includes.
There's not so good.
Any further discussion? Seenan, roll call?
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
And Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item twenty, vote to ratify Amendment seven of the Department of Housing and Community Development, DHCD, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Grant of fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, the Town of Southbridge Agreement to transfer six hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents from six A program delivery to six E construction. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Thank you. I have a motion, a second. Uh, Karen, I guess?
Sure. Um, this item was recommended by the subcommittee and, um, DHCD requires the town council to vote a transfer when it's coming out of the, um, let's see, when it's coming out of the program delivery going into construction. And this should be the final, the seventy-six fifty-eight that will close out the fiscal year two thousand and eighteen grant.
Close out the grant. Yay. Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a three-zero unanimous vote. Um, one question that was raised in there was, uh, have we not done this in the past? And I believe this came from, and Rosemary can correct me if I'm wrong, this came from the audit that they received on this grant funds. So, um, they, you know, submitted this up to make sure this was clear, eighteen is closed out properly. Thank you.
I could just say.
Any other question? Go ahead, Rosemary. Go ahead.
Sorry. Um, so I, I just wanted to clarify something. This, um, six hundred and, that, that figure is actually closing out, um, that line item for the fiscal year eighteen grant, but it's not closing out the whole grant yet because, um, we're going to be spending some money on the phase four, also referred to as Hamilton Alley of our Central Street Parking Lot project. So that's going to be done probably within, um, I think maybe thirty days. Um, and so there, that's why we're transferring money over to the construction line item. Um, and because we no longer needed to use it, um, that money in that other line item. I hope I'm not confusing you more. But, um, anyway, we still have some mu- we still have to pay for phase four, the construction work. So then, once that's all paid, then that, um, grant should be closed out.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor Steves, did you have anything?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Ryan?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marquetti?
Uh, just for clarification, I voted no.
Thank you.
At the subcommittee, thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Seenan, roll call?
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes, but I wanted to make a clarification real quick. That was, we just had that meeting, you were on the subcommittee, Counselor Marquetti.
Oh, I wasn't?
No.
And I, and I stand, I stand, I stand corrected. Sorry. I was thinking it.
Got it. Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yeah.
And Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
Item twenty-one, vote to ratify the contract between Town of Southbridge and Cornerstone Building Services, a low bidder for the amount of sixty-one thousand, three hundred thousand dollars for construction of the WFP load and dock alterations. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Counselor Daniel, second by Counselor Adams. And for the record, WFP, I'm going to go with is the water filtration plant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you. I do appreciate the CDVG, I mean, uh, Rosemary and her team for putting together the, uh, acronyms, uh, and her motions and we're going to make sure that we do that for all so that everybody has an understanding of what we're talking about when we do that. Uh, so, so yeah, motion is second. Uh, this went to DPW, so, um, I guess we'll go with Counselor Marquetti first, I guess. For his subcommittee recommendation.
Okay, this one was a, uh, three to nothing recommendation to go to council for a, for a vote. Counselor Dow had most of the questions about it. He wanted to see the, um, the plans for this. And, uh, Deputy Director did send us all a plan. It was about a hundred pages long and it included all the bid, the contract and the designs for the, uh, Counselor Dow shaking his head, well, you know, I'm not a construction expert. That's what it looked like to me was the construction plans and the contract and the bid. I will say this though, uh, looking at those hundred pages and, um, there was a engineering company that was involved in this too and, and I was just curious, how much did they charge for this? This whole plan. That's all. It was three to nothing. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Karen, did you have anything to add?
I think, no, not at this time. I'll, I'll turn it over to Heather.
Heather?
Um, I will just begin to say that this was a bid that went out for a second time. Um, the original time that it came in, we, we basically rejected the bid because we only got one bid. It was over eighty-eight thousand. I don't have the number right in front of me, but we knew that it was much higher than what we expected and because we only got the one bid, we decided that we were going to reject the first bid documents. This time we did get three bids. Um, it was designed by an engineer and an architect because it is a building project. Um, that came out of the water fund money. As it was explained earlier in the project is that this was twofold because we have water storage tanks for chemicals that need to be replaced, that will not fit through any door in the building. Um, it was obviously an oversight when the building was developed. These tanks have about a twenty-year life. We are at that point. They're poly tanks. Um, they need to be replaced. In order to replace the tanks, we are replacing a failing door that is corroded, that had been identified in the building studies that it was corroded and needed to be replaced. But we're replacing it with a larger roll-up door that will allow us to get the equipment that is sized in and out. When we were doing this project, um, initially we put money in the budget. I know it was spoke of, of thirty thousand dollars in the water budget last year. That was a estimate before we had done any designs or anything at that time. The design was done in the water budget last year. I don't have the numbers in front of me of what the costs were, but it was bid out and voted, went, came to, you know, get her three quotes and went on. Um, the design had to have a second man door added because of compliance issues with, um, egress. so that was something that originally we didn't expect. In addition, there was a lot of, uh, electrical and fire alarms that had to be moved. I'll take some questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, questions? Counselor Catron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the DPW Director, Heather, um, is, is this an emergency?
It's getting to the point where it's getting to be an emergency that tanks are failing. We have purchased the tanks and would like to get them installed. I mean, they're not failed, but we are worried about them failing because they degrade. And I know Steve Redward is on the phone, so he can also speak to that if he, what his concerns are there.
Thank you, if I may continue, Mr. Chairman, were there no tanks available, same size? Is there, is, are there tanks available that will fit through an existing door?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Well, a tank not of adequate size that we need to use.
The difference in size of tank, what's there now versus what we're replacing, is what?
I believe we're using the same size, but I'll let Steve clarify. We cannot fit the tanks through the door, the tanks are larger than would go in and out of the door the existing tanks are.
Okay, thank you. Also, um, who's, who's gonna be overseeing this project?
The DPW will oversee the construction.
Okay.
To get additional quotes from anybody to oversee it, we'll work at that point to, to do it, but at this point, it's, we, we will oversee it with assistance of the Water Department, who have guys on the site all the time.
So the contract states that they have a hundred and twenty days to complete? Does this ensure us that there will be no additional change orders?
Well, as long as what the scope of work is being done is what is on the contract documents, then there won't be any additional change orders. If they find something that wasn't addressed in the contract documents, we'll have to deal with it at that time.
The engineering firm that took a look at this, was who?
McClure, McClure Engineering.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did ask for the, the contra, but you guys sent me what you sent out for bid. I was asking what come back, what, where do you come up with the sixty-one thousand dollars? Who, what's, who, who, uh, reviewer? And I keep asking, who's reviewing those contracts? And I don't have no answer from any of you, like, nobody say, I do, like, you guys have a blueprint to work off, and I, and I understand when you have a, a blueprint, the engineer design, it was a bit easy to, you know, uh, send out to contractor bid on it. My question is, are you come back and gonna ask for more money? Again, the answer was, we don't know. I understand sometimes with change of order, but it's different between change of order and forget something. And all these question I get, you guys don't have no answer for me, and then he's, uh, the answer was a smart answer, as a package this big, uh, are you gonna review it? Doesn't matter if I'm gonna review it or not, so this is why he sent me the standard word, standard contra, that will be sent on any project, pretty much. At the end, the blueprint was important. Who review those blue, uh, blueprint? And, and they decide if the contractors, the one he bid on those blueprint is correct, what's on it or not? Uh, we have somebody, you, uh, uh, the other person, whatever, who review those? And who's supposed to be responsible, uh, when we get the low bid and they forget something on that? It was on the blueprint itself and, and not, uh, catch it to be able to decide if the second bid was better, have everything on it. I, I, I think I, you understand exactly where I come from, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I'll, I'll try to address this. I don't believe that Matt understood what you were asking for, and unfortunately, it wasn't communicated, I don't think you got the information you were looking for. The bid was a lump sum bid for everything that is on those drawings. That is how that contract is written, if you look at the contract documents, that's how it's asked for. A schedule of values will be requested for payment items, for him to break down on how much he should be, he will schedule out his payments and his schedule of values. Um, and we, we can't ask for that in their contract until after that. We don't get a detailed nuts and bolts, this is how many hours, this is how many costs, you never get that from a contractor in a municipal type of bidding setting. The only thing we can ask him to do is provide us with a bid item, with bid item or a lump sum item on a breakdown of a bid. Unless we're asking for a quote, which is different, but when you're asking for a bid, you have to break it down on a certain bid form, and that's how everybody bids on it. So, the way we, we view these bids is by comparing them, company by company to bid on them, and then by checking references, which is what we did. They have the lowest bid, we check their references, they're in good standing, all their references gave them glowing references, that they were a good company to work for, had no issues, minimal change orders, and that is what we have to go on. We don't have any reason to deny their bid because of that. We can't find any reason, they have to agree that they included everything in their bid, and that is part of the construction documents when they submit it and by signing the contract. I know that's a little different than maybe the way the private world works, but unfortunately, we don't get the ability to get, ask them for a breakdown of prices for the door and for everything, and how many hours they're going to spend. We don't have that ability at the time of bid, and of the time of getting the bids in.
So, when you have a blueprint, work it off. You have a blueprint designed by the engineer, what the town paid for it. So that's what, if you forget something on a blueprint, is it, who review that, the scope of work, what the contractor, if you have everything on there, a blueprint supposed to be done before we give them the job? Are we gonna, I, if the contractor, yeah, if the contractor forget something on the blueprint, are you guys gonna come back and ask out for more money because he forgot?
No, if it's on the blueprint, he has to include it on the draw, in his price. It's already included. And, and the blueprint was part of the contract, that's part of what was provided, and that's what he bid on. He has to agree to install everything that's on the blueprint. We don't pay them more money if they forgot something that's on the blueprint.
So, so as a town, we don't review that, or the work?
We don't get to review it with the contractor, no we don't. We provide him the information, they agree that they've included everything. If they have a problem at the time of, when we go out and say you're a low bidder, if they have a problem and don't think that they've provided something, then they have a chance to back out at that time, and that's only time they have a chance to back out. If not, they have to do it for that price that's on the contract. If it's on the blueprint, that's what they have to provide us.
Thank you.
And the blueprint, what was on blueprint was reviewed by the Water Department to make sure that that's what they needed. That was what we looked at, that's what we needed, they review it for code issues, not the Water Department, but the engineer is stamping it, and he had an architect stamp it. That's why the door was, additional door was having to be installed, because neither I or the Water Department would have even known that was a code issue if it wasn't brought up by the architects.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Counselor Steves, did you have anything? You all set?
No, I don't.
Counselor Marquetti? Counselor Marquetti?
Well, I just want to reply for, to what Counselor Dow is asking. I understand what he's asking, because, just because somebody is the low bid, doesn't mean it's the most responsible bid. You don't always have to go with the low bid, most state governments, they look at the most responsible bidder. And what's happened to us in the past is we put something out to bid, someone was the low bid, then they come back with multiple change orders, and they no longer are the low bid, then suddenly they become the high bid, so I think that's what he's trying to get at. I mean, I'm, I'm not saying I'm against this, I'm just saying that I think I understand what's going on here with these bids. I mean, look at one of these, look at this amendment, uh, Agenda Item Number twenty-four, you admitted that there's problems with body towers, because the engineers did something wrong and you can't even get them back.
Engineers didn't do anything wrong, I, you, that is not.
They were overseeing it, so, anyway.
Alright, hold on, hold on, hold on, Heather. That's a totally different agenda item.
Right, I know.
We'll get to that when we get to it, okay? Alright?
I'm just saying that I understand where Counselor Dow is coming from, and sometimes you see these low bids, and then they become the high bid when we get done with the project. But, am I gonna vote this down? No, I know that you need this, so, thank you.
Okay.
I just want to address something with the way the bidding laws are in the Massachusetts, and he is correct. The only way, there is different bidding laws for different things, and it is the most responsive bidder on certain things, but you have to, if they're responsive in their quote and provided all the paperwork and all the documentation, and say that they're going to do a project, and you can't find a reference that says they're bad, and you can't find a DCAM reference that says that they haven't done anything, you can't just reject the bid because you don't think that they're gonna be the best company. You have to have a basis to base it on. Unfortunately, you, we don't, we have no reason to believe that this company is gonna be anything but a good company to work for, we don't have any experience with them, I agree with that, but the experience that we do have, they be responsive in their bid, they provided the proper documentation, they did exactly what we asked for in the bid documents as far as signing all the forms, there's no reason that we can disqualify them, which is what you have to do if you're not going to awards the low bidder.
Correct, okay, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, just, I, I actually followed, uh, Mr. Lincoln earlier today about the unmatched paperwork on the memo itself, uh, it was Capital Island Project. It's twenty, it was estimated about thirty thousand, about thirty thousand dollars.
Hold on, Counselor Steves? Counselor Steves?
Alright, I didn't realize I was, I didn't realize I was trying to.
Alright, go ahead, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's one that come up in the, I did talk, I think, today, about the, 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 it cost about thirty thousand dollars for the Capital Island Project, this Capital Island Project. Wanted to know why, you know, why, would you like to have, uh, like the explanation to everybody? And, and I just want to make note that I have seen also the DPW in the past on the lowest bidder, not go with the lowest bidder, because of what she referenced just, uh, a few seconds ago. So I have seen our DPW do that, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so, Counselor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, I'm not saying anything about the company. I'm saying before, you know, I just, I, I'm a new, and what I hear lately, we forget something, something wasn't added, so I want to make sure in the future we don't have that issue. If we pay an engineer to design a firm, uh, plan, a blueprint, why we gonna have that issue all the time, come back we forgot something? I'm not against any company or, or your decision, you know, we worked in the past before either here. And, but, when I ask him, like, who reviewing it? And I keep asking the same question, who review those contra? I don't get no answer. And when I say, send it to me, I shouldn't say that maybe, but I'm gonna say it, I don't know if it's gonna come back and hit me. Uh, uh, he's like, okay, take hundred oh six of pages and review it if you can. But that's not what I asked for, I don't ask for the standard contra. You know, the labor and all the stuff, what the law say, I ask for the specific bid, what you sent out, what they come back in, because he wouldn't answer to me, who reviewing it? So, my point is why we should have that all the time? If we pay engineer a lot of money to, uh, uh, make a blueprint for the town, and you guys review it and send it out, why we gonna forget stuff? Why we gonna keep, come back for more money? I understand change of order, like you say, sometime, you know, you have something, it's not seen, and then you open and you see it, I understand that. But I don't understand, and I, I'm gonna install a door, but I forget to add the hedges and the handle, and then now you're gonna come back to us, you're gonna put us on the spot, like, we have to vote on it or the door is not gonna be up, that's my whole point. And, and I don't think he's a professional, the way he talked to me, to answer me the question I asked. So I think he needs more education, thank you.
Okay, uh, let me go now. Counselor Catron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to the DPW Director, Heather. Heather, are we replacing this, I'm sorry, I don't know what's in there now. Are these poly tanks that are in there now? I can't hear you, Heather. Thank you.
Sorry, sorry about that, um, they don't know, they don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm here, Heather. So, yes, those are, um, we have one forty-five hundred gallon, uh, poly storage tank for sodium hydroxide, and it is approximately fifteen to twenty feet across, and the only option they gave us in the building was to tear a wall down to put a similar tank in. So our, it, it were mandated by DEP to have a certain amount of storage, and it's, it's a thirty-day minimum storage, which that's the quantity that we have to have on-site by regulation. So we, we priced out two poly tanks, um, that will fit in the space available and give us the same amount of storage, and, and that's kind of the reason the door needs to be enlarged. Um, it just was poor planning when the building was designed twenty-some odd years ago.
And the current tanks are poly that are in place?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Just to follow up on something Counselor Dow mentioned earlier, because there are an extensive amount of change orders that seem to come through from the DPW. Uh, is there, do we have an in-house engineer in the DPW that reviews these type of designs, plans, and oversees these projects?
Yes, we do. That's what he needs to know, and that's what he needs to direct, uh, the, the deputy director are awesome. We both review it, and both review those specifications. I can't say they are your first person, they're basically one of the things we do. And that's partially why I'm hiring engineers, because we check out work, and we get at it, we provide comments, we provide data, and we try to make sure that the project is essentially possible.
I couldn't make out what you said, Heather, I'm sorry.
I can't hear a word she said.
Yeah, I was pretty garbled, Heather, I'm not sure what's up.
Um, is that something better?
No. No. So, I do know she said there's two engineers, but, uh... We have two licensed engineers on staff, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah.
Yeah, I have the IED, I know I have a license, not, not in Houston, but, but in your state.
Okay, thank you, I can't make out what she's saying.
I, I can't, I don't know what else to do.
Alright, Counselor Dow, did you have anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, one more thing, when I ask him who review those contra, he say, hundred plus pages, this thick, who's gonna review all this? So, if he is working for the town and he getting paid, I think he have to review them, to give us the right, uh, the right answer and the right work for the, for the citizen and the town of South Beach. Thank you.
Alright, I think, uh, what we'll do is, uh, our next DPW meeting, perhaps Counselor Marquetti, we can have a discussion about, uh, just a brief on, uh, bidding processes for new councilors, and an update for the uh, councilors that are here, just to discuss, uh, how it goes about for the bidding processes, uh, and, uh, mass procurement laws and, and all that, so that we can have a, a deeper understanding, make sure we're all on the same page.
Why don't you shoot me an email on that?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion on this topic, I'll ask. Let me unmute Counselor Steves, because I muted him, because some people were talking in the background. Hold on. Counselor Steves, did you have anything else?
About that, um, no, I don't have anything specific, thanks.
Counselor Ryan?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, any other councilors? Same then, roll call?
Counselor Ryan?
Yeah.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Jovan?
Yes.
And Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, Steve, for being here on that, uh, given the fact that the water treatment is, uh, biggest issue here, to make sure we have the chemicals and the right processes, uh, important, so thank you. Item twenty-two, vote to approve the transfer of sixty-one thousand three hundred dollars from the Water Stabilization Fund to a new project account for water filtration plant, load and dock alterations to fund the contract with Cornerstone Building Services. We require two thirds vote, is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Karen, do you have anything on this one? No, we talked about, this is just to fund the project we just talked about.
Yes, and I just wanted to, um, point out that the balance in the Water Stabilization Fund is approximately two point one million dollars currently.
Thank you. Any questions, Counselor Steves?
Um, I don't have anything.
Counselor Ryan?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Any other councilors? council Marketti
uh this was uh approved by the our subcommittee three to nothing vote to go to the council I wanna thank council Steve for pointing out that this needed a two thirds vote thank you
thank you any further discussion
do we need to amend this or
no it's just that it needs a two thirds vote that's all
alright
it's part of the requirements cuz I'm an ice stabilization the received rule of things but doesn't need a motion amend any further discussion roll call
council Steve council Adams
yes
council Katona
no
council Daniel
yes
council Dow
yes
council Jovan
yes
council Marketti
yes
and council Ryan
yeah
thank you motion carries with the two thirds majority council Katona item twenty-three vote to ratify the contract with Leeds Group Incorporated for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one purchase of treated salt for winter operations at sixty dollars and seventeen cents per ton with a minimum of one thousand two hundred and seventy-five tons and maximum of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five tons with funds from snow and ice is there a motion
so moved second
okay I'll go council Adams moved it council Steve second uh I guess we'll go with uh Karen first
okay um this is a cooperative bid that's put together by the town of Oxford and um many cities and towns take part in this the um reason another reason why they do this as well is because it um sometimes results in a lower bid than the prices that are on the state bid list and we had also mentioned that the um the price of the salt and for this fiscal year twenty twenty-one is actually cheaper than the price that we had in fiscal twenty twenty
thank you there are questions Heather's called in on the phone as well so she's on the phone if we need any questions any questions from anyone
just this was
thank you council Marketti I apologize yeah uh council Dow
thank you Mr. Chair uh on the sta- on the first page in the back it's showing uh different type of salt and the contract isn't specific what kind of salt we using for sixteen point seventeen so what we using for what kind of salt
can you hear me
yeah go ahead
so hold on let me just mute myself
no you're good Heather go ahead
I was hearing myself through the computer too so um this is for treated salts this is sodium hypochlorite that has a treatment that's placed onto it so that it has a lower um melting temperature uh when you use regular salt it only it stops melting ice at a certain temperature so we use the treated salt when it's very cold out um so this is only for the treated salt that's what we call it treated salt
thank you thank you council Steve
I couldn't hear anything that she just said I don't know if it's my phone or hers or something in the middle but can you hear me I I actually had to twist handsets so I don't know if this phone's even alive at the moment so
I can hear you
we can hear you but we could hear her as well so I'm not sure what's on your end
I can hear you
so you said it it was just the type of salt she clarified that is the treated sodium chloride road salt as per the bid specs
now I can hear you yeah
okay alright any other questions
I would just like to say um the one other reason that we do go with a cooperative bid is that by going with a cooperative bid we are guaranteed to get the salt when we need it if we went under the mass state bid when there was a shortage in salt last uh three or four years ago if you were on the state mass state bid they were prioritizing themselves over the town so you weren't guaranteed to get it but we were still getting our treated salt because of the way the co-op bid was done and the contracts that we had
okay thank you any other questions council Ryan anything
nothing at this time Mr. Chair
any other counselors
no
standing on roll call
council Adams
yes
council Katona
yes
council Daniel
yes
council Dow
yes
council Jovan
yes
council Marketti
yes
council Ryan
yeah
and council Steve
yeah
motion carries item twenty-four vote to ratify amendment number two for professional services agreement for the bio tower upgrade construction administration services contract for the installation and program of instrumentation and controls of the ABF pumps to allow for bypass of the bio tower refunded for the CWSRF projects for the bio tower in the amount of nineteen thousand seven hundred fifty dollars very much
a move
second
second
motion is second uh council Marketti your recommendation from the subcommittee
uh the subcommittee voted uh three to nothing to recommend for this to go to the council there was a question about the date in the contract I don't know if we have to amend this there's nothing in the agenda item about the date but the contract might need to be extended sixty days thank you
right Heather you were gonna look at that I believe somebody was gonna look at that
yes and unfortunately Matt wasn't in today so I'm not sure if anything ever went to Stan Tech but I know that they won't have any issue with extending it for sixty days since we just had a conversation the week previous when we leaving on vacation
cuz obviously it's already expired cuz yesterday was the thirtieth so uh then you haven't done it finished the project yet correct
that's correct
okay
so should we amend it should we amend this motion then to say to and extend the contract for sixty days
yeah if yeah add on to it with the extension of the agreement till
I'll make that amendment
so yeah until October thirty till October thirty-first okay is that okay with you Heather till October thirty-first twenty twenty
that is fine with me
okay so is the motion a second I extend with an addition and extended terms of the contract to October thirty-first two thousand twenty any further discussion on the amendment roll call on the amendment
council Daniel
yes
council Dow
yes
council Jovan
yes
council Marketti
yes
council Ryan
yeah
council Steve
yes
council Adams
yes
and council Katona
no
okay uh there any further discussion on the uh item as amended council Steve did you have anything
oh that's it
council Ryan
uh at this time Mr. Chair
any other counselors standing on roll call
council Dow
yes
council Jovan
yes
council Marketti
yes
council Ryan
yeah
council Steve
yes
council Adams
yes
council Katona
no
and council Daniel
yes
motion carries seven one with council Katona item forty I vote to ratify amendment number one to the VHF VHB contract for professional services from Mill Street Bridge over the Quintabargo River to provide final design of beam and repair bidding assistance and construction phase services in the amount of seven thousand nine hundred dollars with funded from chapter ninety is there a motion
so moved second
second
okay council Marketti your subcommittee recommendation
uh subcommittee recommended this to go to council by three to zero vote um standing on set thank you
thank you uh any other questions council Steve
um not at the moment but I'm looking looking for something hold on it could go to somebody else
council Ryan
nothing at this time Mr. Chair
any other counselors so Heather uh question when will this go uh out to bid anticipated and maybe start construction or how long are we looking at for that
so the first thing that we have to do is submit the plans to the state and have them approve the plans and agree to the design that is proposed um as soon as this is uh signed that will be submitted and then we will be dealing with the state and their timeline sometimes these things can get delayed but we're hopeful that the state is understanding of how critical it is for us to get that um back in service and as soon as they give us the okay then the plans will go out to bid
okay I know we
so I'm hopeful that I'm I'm hopeful that that will be within a month it will get approval back and be able to go out to bid
okay cuz I know we had reached out to state senator Batman who was assistant maybe potentially getting some funding for this as well so if we have to reach out to them make sure that we push this around because it is vital to get that back open especially with the businesses that are going in and all the work that's being done in that area by that development
yeah I I'm not sure that at this time it's vital for us to push um with the regarding that this funding obviously we're using our chapter ninety funding because this is for the temporary repair um I would say that it is in our best interest to keep putting pressure on for the permanent repair I know that it is on mast D O T radar for um adding this to the tip uh in the future um in conjunction with the other bridge that's on Mill Street um to do the complete repair which is what we're pushing for so that we don't have to do the funding on that um knowing that it was depending on the option because we had done the options with the construction cost estimates by the engineers it could be one and a half to two point two million I believe with the cost depending on what the repair was that was done this is a temporary repair we've gotten some preliminary budget numbers of thirty forty thousand dollars um of course those aren't bid numbers so we are hopeful that it could come in that price or cheaper and so we get some competitive bridge um bidding and it should be pretty quick once we can get the bids done and award of the contract um that's gonna probably take longer than the actual repair itself
okay thank you council Ma- uh council Dow
uh thank you Mr. Chair through you Heather when when the meeting I understood the the state already proved some of the repairing this is was something else you guys don't see a beam or something have to be added why so it was nothing no preview no plan nothing done in the past we just recently this is this is what we're looking right now for that
the the state okay so let's back up the state closed this bridge and said that a repair needed to be done on the beam end um we hired an engineer we did we hired the engineer which is VHB they're the engineer they're not the contractors to do a review of the what needed to be done um for the repairs and what our options were whether it was a temporary repair whether it was a full bridge repair and what the different options they provided us that option report which is what we've been going off of the VHB has provided us with a preliminary plan that's not stamped so it can't be gone out to bid and it can't be submitted to the state for approval of what a temporary beam and repair would be that's the timber repair that we're proposing to do right now this document from VHB provides us with stamped plans stamped by the engineer that we can go out to bid and submit in to the state for review and approval to go out to bid that they'll say yes once you do this you can reopen the bridge and this is what it will be posted for and all of the formal formality things and they'll also help oversee the contract and the bid that's what this project is for the first plan was just to get an idea because we really had no clear scope from the state of what they wanted done so we had to get an idea of how big a project did we need to do did we need to do a full bridge repair at one and a half million or something more in the fifty thousand dollar range and what did that look like and that's when the timber repairs came into play this is a temporary repair
so you think in a few months that bridge will be open for the businesses in the back to be able to continue working and
that's our that's the plan is to get the bridge reopened with the timbers um it will have to go out to bid to a contractor to install those timbers and properly cut them and do the um repair work that needs to be done on the ends of the beams cutting out the bad sections being able to prop the timbers up there properly and fit them and then it will be able to be reopened for the businesses in the back
uh can it be that a priority like number one on your list like to be done ASAP
as soon as the state like I said as soon as the state comes back and says yes this is what we want and we agree with your design we will put it out to bid
thank you thank you Mr. Chair thank you council Adams
thank you Mr. Chair this may have been answered at DPW meeting but uh Heather how long will this temporary repair last estimated
it's estimated it would should last between three and five years your our biggest concern is if we have more um degradation in the beams any other locations besides the end or additional locations additional beams cuz this is a repair on I believe it's beam seven two but seven the two one two and seven so there's seven beams across that bridge I believe one and seven are the outside two is the second one in from one um and it's showing corrosion at the beam end so if we have to do this or hopefully it would be something we just do again and keep that bridge open um until it can be fully repaired at this point it looks like um where it's lining up on the tip it should be able to be that bridge will be repaired within the next five years
can just to follow up to Heather can you limit the amount of tonnage that goes across that bridge
that's part of the calculations that will be done and submitted to the state um and that's part of the posting and the calculations that need to be done
thank you that's all
and then the the state will be posting that bridge of us and the state will have to post that bridge for tonnage
thank and council Adams we did discuss how long uh that was part of the discussion with the DPW how long we thought that would
yeah thank you Mr. Chair I apologize it was at a BFW or better than council meeting
no it's a great question and great to ask so the public knows too that uh that's the anticipated uh that this would just be a temporary fix not a permanent fix uh council Ryan anything
nothing at the time Mr. Chair
council Steve
um the only thing I wanted to point out is that maybe we should make it an amendment just to clarify that the amount of seventy nine hundred refunding from chapter ninety actually brings the total contract cost of thirteen thousand one twenty
okay is that is that what the co- contract cost is totaled Heather it's thirteen twenty okay
thirteen one hundred and twenty
one hundred and twenty that friendly amendment anybody opposed to that okay just take that as a friendly amendment any other discussion as amended can I stand on roll call
council Jovan
yes
council Marketti
yes
council Ryan
yeah
council Steve
yes
council Adams
yes
council Katona
yes
council Daniel
yes
and council Dow
yes
a motion carries item twenty-six vote to rescind the amended travel policy voted by the Southridge Town Council on August tenth two thousand twenty a vote to change the policy to mirror the state's mandated guidelines is there a motion
so moved
for a second that's our motion by council Adams second uh Karen now would you further this to you
okay um thank um the reason one of the reasons why we wanted to bring this back too is because we have a um do the travel we do have a couple of um employees that would need to quarantine for the fourteen days however um if we could amend this to at least include a provision where if they follow the state guideline
to at least include a provision where if they follow the state guidelines, obtain a negative COVID nineteen test, that they could then return to work prior to the, um, serving the full fourteen days under the quarantine. Um, there is also one other section in here that we have, I'm just kind of looking through, um, to see that the, that the state had originally in their version, and I believe since they've taken it out, because we've got an updated version and it's not in there any longer, um, it would be for any employees who willingly travel outside of the exempt areas, that they cannot use, that they would have to use their own accrued vacation sick or sick time or personal time to cover, to cover the time. If we were to follow the state's, um, policy on this, they don't have that provision any longer, um, so we would, and we would, we're going to clarify when the new town manager comes in, is that we might have to provide them the amount of time to use during their quarantine. So those are the couple of things that are coming up, whether this should be rescinded or just amended.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Chair, I guess, who, who just spoke?
Oh, Jackie, uh, Counsel Brian, excuse me. Uh, go ahead, Counsel Ray.
I, I just, I have a couple of questions on, uh, on this. Um, so if we institute a new policy with the understanding be that it would still be the same quarantine period for any employee, town employee that left, um, and went to, um, a, a zone recognized by the state as having a high risk of, um, contracting COVID?
I'm sorry, say, say, say that question again, Counsel Ryan?
Sorry, um, so my, my question is, if we rescind this policy and we adopt, we adopt state guidelines, would it be mandatory if an employee leaves and goes to take tests and then comes back, would it still be required for them to stay home for fourteen days during, for quarantine?
And do you want me to take this?
Um, well, well, let, let me just say, say this, um, that in the, um, the state, um, I'm just trying to see, there's two different things in, in the, um, the state policy. If, um, if a person has received a negative test result performed in a sample that was taken no longer than seventy-two hours before they come back. So if you can get a test within seventy-two hours before you come back to Massachusetts, or you can come back, quarantine, take a test, and then if it comes back negative, then you can come back. Does that answer your question?
So it, it weakens it, it, it weakens the restriction, is what it sounds like. Um, I, I guess my concern is, we still don't know how, we still don't have a clear answer on how long people can be asymptomatic and not have the enough, uh, the, the antibodies or the viral, uh, load count to be high enough to determine whether or not they actually are positive yet. So I, I, I just wonder what the steps are if somebody does go to Texas and may not initially show enough viral load or enough, um, antibodies, so it's up to develop a positive test result, but may end up contracting and being positive later.
Okay, I'll call on Andy to kind of help with this.
Yeah, I know, medical, medical, that's my background.
Okay, I'm not gonna pretend I'm medical at all, but, um, the state has determined and, and pretty much the original guidance that we adopted was, this council adopted a cer- the, the quarantine guidance based on the state's advisory guidance. The day after this council adopted that, the state turned their advisory guidance into mandatory guidance. Now, when this council voted to adopt the quarantine guidance, they also said that they would keep it open as the state adjusts and adapts, that they would revisit it. Uh, Charlie Baker keeps insisting that what he's doing is based on science. Um, I don't pretend to be medical, you, I'll defer to you on that, but, um, you are correct, you can be asymptomatic, you can be asymptomatic right through the whole quarantine period. Um, the state has shifted to say that they will accept the test. I am looking at people who are taking a week off and going to high-risk states and then taking an additional fourteen days off because the town of Southbridge does not allow for the test as an alternative. And back to production, which this council during the closed period expressed a million times, we're losing production, we're losing production. Um, every time somebody leaves the state for a high-risk state, we lose fourteen additional days' production out of that person. So present this to the council as an option. Um, one, to minimize the amount of times we have to visit it, because if we just adopt the state as it's amended, then the, the town's policy is, the state's policy as it amended, as it's amended. And secondly, to minimize the amount of wasting of resources or having resources that are essentially quote owned by the state, you know, my time as my job is owned, I mean, owned by the town. Doesn't do the town any good if I'm not here to do my job.
Okay.
Hey, that makes sense, hey.
Go ahead, Counsel Adams.
Hey, Mr. Chair, just then, maybe Andy can answer this for me. When you take the molecular test and, and they swab, or you swab, or you do a home kit, whatever it may be, when you take that molecular test, doesn't it identify if you have those proteins already in your system? And you don't have to worry about waiting for system or your symptoms to come about two to fourteen days later. That molecular test is to find out if you actually have it right there on the spot, even if you're not showing signs of having your asymptomatic.
Correct. The issue becomes, and I can't answer this question, from the time, Dave, let's say you have it, let's say you test positive, and I happen to be around you three minutes before you're positive. What I can't answer to you is, does it take twenty-four hours for me to show positive? Does it take forty-eight? I don't know how men, how long it takes before I show positive. So to Jackie's point, if we, if we defer to a test, that can be taken the day we get back to Massachusetts, what if I was affected that morning and I'm not positive yet? I don't know how long it takes, the incubation period for me.
So I don't argue this point. Can you just get that, if you go to Big Y, the next day after you get a negative test?
I could.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
So I, I guess my, uh, my question was, uh, and I had this conversation with, with this high noise as well, uh, is it, and just clarify this, my understanding of the state was if you were quarantined at home, you were, you were paid, you were paid for that. So if somebody leaves a, um, a high-risk area, comes back, where it's, uh, they quarantined until they are, uh, either get a test for the fourteen days, they can use time that's COVID-related time. Is that still correct or not?
As far as I know, and I, I'm not gonna play lawyer, but that is a federal law, the Families Coronavirus, Families First Coronavirus Response Act, they pay to leave rights. And it alludes to if there is any quarantine period as a result of a local law, a state law, or federal law, that if an employee meets certain criteria, they have to pay that sick time. We could put in ours as we did the first time, that we're not gonna do that, but I don't know if that will stand up if it's tested. That's, that's a lawyer question.
Well, uh, my point is, to this, point was, I have a problem saying to an employee, hey, look, uh, this is the way it is, but, a- and I would hope, uh, I, you know, I have faith in our employees, but there are some that take advantage of systems, that, uh, I go away out of state and then I come back and I say, look, uh, I'm quarantined, I gotta get, I get paid my two weeks of sick time, and it doesn't count against my sick time back, because it's COVID nineteen related. Uh, if you knowingly go out of state, and I get this, there's people that go out for a whole bunch of, of reasons, and I don't wanna restrict anybody's, um, travel, but somebody decides, hey, I'm gonna bop down to Florida for the weekend, 'cause I have the weekend, and I come back and I get two weeks off with pay, um, and don't have to work. I, I mean, that's, that was what was brought up at the first meeting as well. Uh, and I just don't know the way around it. I, I don't have any problem right now amending this just to say, uh, keep our policy in place, and then amended to say that you can come back to work with a test and then have it reviewed by legal, uh, or somebody with some legal, uh, background. I mean, we're all in uncharted waters here, so, um, I, that's just my concern. So I'll defer to Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think what was discussed, it was Kim, the Human Research, I think, and she say, when you wanna travel, you have to fill out a form and say where you're going, and I'm not sure if I understood wrong, it's up to them to say yes or no, and if you go on your own, that mean you're responsible for when you come back, you have to take the fourteen days on your own. You know, it's not, it's up to the, I'm a regency, uh, you know, family or, or something, but if you wanna go vacation, I think that's what I understood from her, is a form, you fill it up and you say where you're going and what's the reasons. I mean, they will say yes or no. Regarding that form, they fill it up if they're gonna get paid or not, when they come back to, uh, quarantine fourteen days. I'm not sure if I understood wrong at that time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Again, I, I just wanna do, whatever we do, we make sure that we're on good legal ground, uh, to make good sound policies. Uh, Counsel Marquetti?
Uh, thank you. But I think, uh, the motion that we had made at the subcommittee was just to rescind our travel policy because the state keeps changing their travel policy, so we were going to just go with the state's policy. So that's what I think we were, we voted to do.
Okay. Yeah, I agree, that's, that's what we did, yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, I have another question, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Counsel Ryan.
Um, Mr. Chair, to you. Um, to anyone who can answer, 'cause I, I just kind of, I, I want a clarification on this. Now, elected and appointed people are considered town employees by state law, so I wonder what, does this have any application to, say, if I went to Texas again and came back, would I have to follow that mandate or that policy?
Yes.
I, if I may-
I would leave, so you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to go to meetings, I would think, but we're doing them remotely anyway, so.
Okay. Counsel, uh, Mr. Counsel-
We had that, we talked about it at town gov.
I mean, the state law right now requires you to quarantine or take the test, and all we are putting before you is a vote to come more in alignment with the state. Um, there is a assumption that, um, emergency employees, like police and fire, do not have to do this. If the police and fire travel for purposes of their job, otherwise, fire department goes down to help a rescue mission from a hurricane or something in North Carolina, then they are exempt from the law. But if they travel for leisure, they have to comply with the law. The only time that they are exempt, or a necessary employee is exempt, is if they travel for reasons of their job.
That's correct, yeah. Counsel Adams?
Hey, Mr. Chair, just so you know, I, I just went to Virginia and I followed all the guidelines from filling out that state form, receiving texts every single day, and if we, we amend this to follow the state guidance or the mandate, you're supposed to stay at home no matter what until you have a negative molecular test, period. You're not even supposed to go to Big Y, you're not supposed to go to the gas station, and if you've ever filled out that form, they'll talk about your dependents and who, who is staying with you, and you have a room for yourself and an extra bathroom and a kitchen and all that kind of stuff. So it really is, you cannot go anywhere until you have a negative test. So it's pretty cut and dry.
But that's, that's whether this council adopts a change or not, that's a state law. That, whether we, whether we choose to follow the state or be more strict in the state, you still have to do that to, to go out about, about town. But if you wanna return to work right now, you have to stay out for fourteen days, regardless of if you have a test or not. This change would allow the test to be considered a town-
Okay. Counsel Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the whole, the whole actually discussed is about if the employee know that a state is high-risk and he go and come back. Who, the whole, the whole idea, oh, the town have to pay him the fourteen days if he, if he know in high-risk state and he go to it, he doesn't care just to get the fourteen day. We probably have to put that section extra on, on the state law, saying if he know and he still went, he's responsible for the fourteen days quarantine or he have to come with the test negative. I think this is the only easy way to go. That's our concern, not to pay somebody, he know, you're not supposed to go to that state, your fourteen days, you've got a quarantine, when they come back, because he could refuse to do the test and stay home fourteen days. Thank you.
That, that's just if the employee, if just I'm, I'm correct from what I'm reading, is if we determine that they cannot do their job remotely. Is that correct?
Right. That's, that's the way I interpreted, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Which we've had, most, majority of people work remotely, as is, but there may be some circumstances. Is there any further discussion on this?
Something I think about.
Go ahead, Counsel.
Um, if the, if this is the council's biggest concern with, if the council thinks that it's a good idea to, to accept the test, but their biggest concern is the use of leave during the stay-at-home period, I think the council could possibly adopt the state's policy as the state amended it, or actually eliminate their policy, except for sections four, um, I mean, six and seven, which is use of leave during the stay-at-home period, that's a part already in there, and number seven is the enforcement authority goes with the human resources. So if this council wished to eliminate the existing policy, exclude the sections six and seven, and adopt the state policy as it's amended, with six and seven attached, I think they could get away with that, until it's actually challenged or until a lawyer can decide if it's legal. Have I lost anybody?
No, I think we should just rescind it.
Then adopt the state one for now and then see, everything's changing day to day, so.
Yeah, we're gonna be playing games here.
Yep. So, any further discussion? Stand on roll call.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Catrona?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Dow?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Marquetti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
No.
And Counsel Steves?
Yeah.
Motion carries seven-one with Counsel Ryan opposed. Counsel's forum, Counsel Catrona?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To you, um, it was great to hear tonight that library's reopening September eighth, uh, for browsing. That was very good news. Um, thank you, Andy, for the daily updates, very much appreciated. Um, the last council meeting, I had asked, and I know, I think there was other discussion in reference to the high electric bills, um, has the acting town manager, or has anyone looked into that? I know I have residents that are still asking, uh, about the, the increase in electric bills, especially last month. Anybody?
Uh, go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, I, I don't, I guess I don't, I don't remember that there was a question that we needed, were we, you talking about that we needed to approach National Grid, or?
I, I, I do know the con- the con- conversation then was the Mass Electric's response to the storm, and then we had a discussion about bills, and I do know the chief, uh, Normandin had sent out, uh, had just sent out an email, uh, saying that, uh, Mass Electric was soliciting comments that he was responding to as Matt, uh, the Emergency Management Director, but according to bills, I know the general conversation was bills, but, uh, more of the response was, uh, the Mass Electric's, uh, handling of the storm. I know they were putting that together with the chief, so I think there's two different things there.
And I know they were putting that together with the chief, so I think there's two different things there.
There is, I I was very, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was very specific and um I'm not sure if you mentioned it yourself um in reference to the high bills and it was said we will look into it. Uh that's what I had heard uh at the last council meeting, so doesn't sound like anything's been done.
No, I just stated that Chief Normandin has responded to Mass Electric on their request for input to the response to the storm. And then it was supposed to be referred to the appropriate subcommittee, whether it's yours, EHS, or PPP, to discuss any further conversations about the Mass Electric response. That was the conversation, that would go to the subcommittee to formulate the response. So if the subcommittee wishes to take that up, that was the exact response at that meeting.
Okay, I watched for clarification, I watched the last meeting just for point of clarification again. Um I I spoke earlier and I'm not going to elaborate, but um about communication, Mr. Chairman, any questions, please give me a call. Keep in mind we're council of nine. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Katrona, I'm just going to respond, I'm well aware that we're a council of nine, I try to communicate with every counselor. I communicate also with the town hall and stated that that information for your specific question needs to have you schedule a subcommittee meeting. So if it didn't go through the proper channel, through the manager's office, as I did appropriately, I apologize. But that was the message that was supposed to be filtered out. I do not schedule your meetings, I ask them to contact you to schedule that meeting. So the assertion that this is not a council of one or that this is not a council of nine is mostly inappropriate. And I apologize if you feel that way.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That offline, thank you.
Absolutely, you can, thank you. Call me anytime or return my.
Councilor Marketti?
Uh thank you. I just want to make a comment on some of the discussions that have been going on, uh not tonight and also at the DPW meeting concerning cost of engineering and overruns and things like that. And it's really my opinion that this town really should consider a clerk of the works, someone who can oversee all the projects. We spend an awful lot of money on engineering and all these projects, not just, not just the engineering of the of the jobs, but also we're putting a lot of engineering companies in charge of the jobs. And it's just my opinion, we could save money if we had someone who was was a clerk of the works, someone who has some engineering background, who could oversee all these jobs. And I mean no disrespect to anyone else on the job right now. I just think it's someone that, something that we should consider going forward, someone who can be the overseer of all the jobs. I know years ago, years ago, we used to have Pammer Clark and he used to be the, he was an engineer and he was, he oversaw everything and it, and it's something that we should consider so we can get out of all these costs. It'd be, it'd be interesting to see if someone could put together a list of how much it's cost us in engineering costs for overseeing all the projects for the last couple of years. I think that'd be something interesting to look at, but that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Steve?
Um thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just, two quick things. First off, for people, for maybe a little bit lighter than what we've been talking about, that the Conches and the Common are going pretty well and this coming Sunday is Island Castaways at the Common. So that ought to be a fairly large crowd, um hopefully they'll socially distance. Um and also I wanted to mention that I was talking to um census people today. And our town is currently running at sixty percent response rate, which is a bit, which is a bit lower than the state's seventy, sixty-seven percent, um although it's already better than than the national sixty-four percent, so. But so if you haven't responded online or by mail, please talk to the census workers that are going around town. I ran into one a couple of days ago. Um and just make sure that we need to, that those of us that are on the council need to be talking, spreading the word around as much as we can that, that about the census goods and why we, why we need to get this done. And it's, the end date's going to be September thirtieth. At that point, they want to, they're planning on recalling all of their census workers and finishing the data collection. And if they don't have, if they haven't hit every single house at that point, um the guy I was talking to is saying that they normally, normally don't get to, or they don't get response from maybe a percent of the houses, then they kind of do their, they they kind of do their data analysis to kind of estimate what those houses would be. So um I was thinking that, that lasted twenty-ten, the town's response rate was sixty-four point two percent, so we can be, we can be better than that. And that's all I had tonight.
Thank you. Councilor Ryan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um nothing really major to report on, I just want to remind everyone that tomorrow is the state primary. If you haven't voted by mail or early voted at the town hall yet, please go and make your voice heard, there's a lot of contested races. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh September fourteenth, I think uh I'm going to try either to do by phone or by remote if I can. I'm going to be in Maine for a week, so I'm not sure if I'm going to be present. But I'm going to try to either by remote. And I want to thank everybody for uh working hard and giving their time to try to improve the town and thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not going to belay, belabor the issue of the interest forms or the residents that have applied, but I will say that there needs to be a better process for this. Um that being said, my wife has been waiting for over, they'll be starting the third month just to get on the Council of Aging. This happened last year on the Trails Committee. This has also happened to multiple individuals where they were told the wrong dates of the uh subcommittee meetings. That was last year and the year before. I think there needs to be a process in place to put in there, especially when we continue to ask for residents to come help us and sit on these boards um and uh the last months before they actually get to see the town council. So I I was hoping that they maybe um either through General Gov or wherever maybe you have to go, maybe we need to put a process in place. And one of my recommendations at this point, that would be, though I do know they contact the chairs of those boards and committees, I would know that there is a recommendation possibly from that chair, regardless if it's a negative or positive. If it's a negative, it should go up to that subcommittee uh with, with that chair's comments of why they don't recommend them or why they do recommend them. So it puts the onus on the chair now. Um also, yeah.
May I comment on that?
I would say, uh one question I was going to ask earlier, if I can ask Karen, can you provide me that uh verbiage about the library being open, starting the ink? I'll put that on social media.
Sure.
Well, thank you. And just let everybody know that Mass Works Grant was submitted on time, there's confirmation to Rosemary. I talked to Karen and then I talked to Rosemary today and everything worked out well. I know they're going to be submitting an EDA, the town will be submitting an EDA uh grant uh down the road for possibly, I believe it's another four million dollars for that project over at the Old A O. Uh Conches on the Common, I I think, I don't know who talked about that, but I recommend that those uh bands be placed on the billboard on the common, it's not on social media. I did drive by the other day and I don't believe I saw the name of the band that was out there and or, and or on cable access as well. Voting goes, I believe, at seven AM to eight PM tomorrow at the community center. And lastly, Trinity Catholic Academy is having its twenty-fifth annual golf tournament, which will be held on Saturday, September twenty-sixth at Heritage Country Club in Charlton. Golf committee hopes that you'll consider supporting this year's event by golfing, purchasing a sponsorship or donating a raffle item. Registrations uh will begin at six thirty that day of, the shotgun will start at seven thirty. And the website is trinitycatholicacademy.org backslash golf classic. Well, there's a few of us playing, a few of us have sponsored, I appreciate that, what is going on that one? That's all I have, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
And Councilor Steve, do you have a question?
Um yeah, I just wanted to comment on, Councilor Adams mentioned about his wife coming up and seeking interest in the Council on Aging. I have never seen her form at all, it has never come to me. I'm not sitting on it, I've never seen it.
Oh, no, no, it's just not you, I, no, no, it's not yours, I believe it's the AHS, but regardless, that, again, that conversation um has gone. I'm just saying we need to have a better process as far as getting some of our residents, residents pushed through to some committees and and up to the town council. Um it shouldn't take a few months to do that, it should be, you know, within that month. That's my recommendation.
Well, I would.
Just a discussion, maybe at Gen Gov to to have a process in place, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um I was pleased tonight to be able to vote on the appointments that we made. It was nice to see some fresh faces and I encourage people in town to continue to consider uh filling our vacancies here, um taking up the uh the torch, as it were, and leading us forward into the future. Um a lot of people made the decision tonight that it would be rewarding for them to do so. Um and I believe it will be rewarding for them to do so, to come forward and to help out the town. So I encourage people to uh look at what the vacancies are, I know that on social media they're posted in a couple of sites, they're also on the town website. Uh please consider helping the town out and uh joining a board uh or committee. Um I'd like to say that I agree with uh what Councilor Dow was saying earlier this evening. Um you know, I like to think that we're a business-friendly town, I like to think that we're a business friendly, friendly council. And um I think Councilor Dow was right, the town should be a little proactive about what's going on. I compliment uh Ms. Scrivens on the work that she's done. But I think that uh Councilor Dow's suggestion about maybe getting a mailing list from the town clerk um and getting some mailings put forward from that wouldn't be a bad idea at all. Um I think he's right, that that the town clerk's office is a good resource and uh want just a little bit of postage, I don't think it would be too much. Um I think that a a mass mailing to the businesses in town that fit the criteria for the grant, um I believe it's five or six, depending upon whether you're an owner or not, um wouldn't be a bad idea at all. So uh with that, um I'm done. The next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, September fourteenth, twenty-twenty.
Thank you. I'd stand a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Don't move. Don't move. Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yeah, one more to that. Yeah, one more to that.
Hold on. What's going? Councilor Dow?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Regardless of what uh Councilor Adam was saying, uh it's taking too long and the board members should recommend. I don't think the board member should be, look at who's applying for volunteer or recommend it. I should, I think it should go to the town manager or come to us because it's a lot of board members like to keep control of that board member, that's why the choice on who they want to be with them or not. And and that in the past, I'm not saying something, I'm just making rapid experience, happened to me too, and now going forward to the town council. Uh thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, definitely something we will work on. Please. Councilor Steve's from Dodge. So we had a motion to adjourn, second.
Councilor Adams?
Yes.
Councilor Katrona?
Yes.
Councilor Daniel?
Yes.
Councilor Dow?
Yes.
Councilor Jovan?
Yes.
Councilor Marketti?
Yes.
Councilor Ryan?
Yeah.
And Councilor Steve, he's a yes.
He's a yes. Okay, thank you, motion to adjourn.